It's 5:30. I'll call the meeting to order. So if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda. I'll ask the commissioners if they've reviewed the agenda, if there's anything they want to add or remove from the consent agenda.
Looks good to me. There was one question I had for Mike, and it was on the-
If it's on the consent agenda, we need to remove the item.
Okay, it would be A, the accounts payable.
Okay. We'll remove item-
Appropriations?
A, appropriations.
Yes.
Put it down for Commissioner.
Yes.
Items for action. Any other modifications? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Just to adopt the agenda?
Yes, with the modification.
With the modification?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I move that we approve the agenda with the exception of dropping item A off of the consent agenda.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Items for commission action. We'll look at item A from consent agenda appropriations.
Okay, the question I had, Mike, was on data pros. It shows a July electric billing of $3,200 and some dollars, and I don't remember seeing data pros on there. Do you know what that was for?
Say that one more time. I know what the data pros is.
It says July water billing.
Yeah, it's utility billing. That's the company we used to do billing for.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure. That's what I thought, but I didn't know for sure.
Yeah, they do over billing for us.
Okay, okay. That answers that.
That's right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, I understood that was the company that does the water billing.
Okay.
So he answered my question. Thank you, Mike.
And I heard I forgot to have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, so let's go back. And I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda as modified.
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we've discussed appropriations, so your question's been answered.
My question's been answered, Mayor.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the common consent agenda, A, item one, A, appropriations.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Items for commission action, A, consider discussion the 2018 revised, 2019 proposed budget. At our last meeting, we had discussed some modifications to the budget. I think those modifications were summarized in our packet. Commissioners have any further questions concerning the revisions to the proposed budget?
I don't have any questions.
I saw the revisions that were sent to me, and I don't have any questions on those in particular. My question is, are we going to have any other further discussion on the budget in addition to this?
Now, do you have other questions? The next meeting would be the public hearing, and at the public hearing, we'll take comments from the public, and then at that time, it'll be presented for us to either adopt it or not adopt it. So, you know, if you do have specific questions now would be.
Okay, yes, I do have some specific questions. Mine, I'll go back to involve the water department. In the budget, the 2019 proposed, we have, we were looking at $500,000 toward an automated meter reading system, and we had talked about increasing some additional funding for the replacement of water lines. And as I understand, the city or water department, their staff, they can handle about $100,000 worth of line replacement a year. And if we actually put more money toward that, we're not actually seeing any more water line replacement. We reached the limit with the $100,000 worth of lines. So what I'm trying to get at is, it's a big investment on this automated meter reading system. I know Atmos Gases is replacing their old gas lines, and at the time of the replacement of gas lines, they're upgrading with new gas meters, and the gas meters have the census, which is the automated meter module that is built into the meters. So when all the meters are eventually changed out in the lines, they'll be able to read those meters remotely. So my question is, do you have an idea how many dollars' worth of lines we have out there identified that we will have to replace and a timeline for that? Are we looking at $400,000 to $500,000 worth of line replacement or more or less?
No. I have replacements scheduled out to 2023.
Okay.
And I don't know the exact dollar figure of that. I built it basically around a $300,000 per year figure that we talked about in the other meeting.
Okay.
So-
So the $300,000 per year would be 2019 through 2023?
Yes.
So that would be $1.2 million?
Yes.
Okay. But the city staff itself, we'd only be able to complete $100,000 worth of line replacements? So would we be looking at taking a bid and having a contractor come in and supplement?
With a contract, yes.
Okay. Have we used a certain contractor before in the past, or this would just be open as a bid process?
We have used-
And?
We put a package together and put it out for bids.
Okay.
There's two local people here in town that do that kind of work. There's one in Caney that does some of it. We've had contractors in from all over in the past.
Okay. My other questions are concerning the automated meter reading. If I remember right, and correct me if I'm wrong, the city does, between turn-ons and turn-offs a year, was that amount quoted around $3,600 a year?
I don't remember the exact number. I had, I didn't bring that information with me tonight.
Okay. What I'm just trying to determine is what the cost savings would be as far as, you know, what it costs to send someone out to turn on or turn off a water meter, what the cost would be, savings would be involved if we went to an automated system, you know, would that eliminate a position or two? We wouldn't be reading the meters anymore? They'd all be read remote? The vehicle that's used, kind of all the cost breakdown to see if this is something that we want to move in that direction to? What are the cost analysis? What's the cost benefits of this versus the initial cost? Because looking at the dollar amounts, you know, they're looking at $500,000 over a four-year projected four-year capital improvement program. So trying to determine what the actual cost benefits are as far as what the savings would be?
And there's a lot of other things that's built into that.
Sure.
We will be doing that full analysis before any work on that started on that project.
Okay, okay. And my other point was, the company that I used to work for, we were forced to move in that direction because the manufacturers that made the metering, they started to, they basically eliminated any mechanical three-phase and single-phase meters. So what they said, if you want a meter, you're going to have to buy a solid state meter. We're not going to support any of the repair kits, anything that go along with that. So they put us into a position to where they moved us in that direction.
And water metering is going in that direction with just the same way. They're slowly eliminating mechanical meters and going to ultrasonic-
Yes.
Is where it's all headed, and at some point, you're not going to be able to buy a mechanical meter anymore.
Right. And my other question was that if this is the road that we're going to go down, look at all the costs involved that we're accruing now and what the cost reductions will be, and then if we're going to be aggressive in replacing water lines at that point when we go out to a site, then to me, it would make sense, if we go that direction, not only to replace the line, but do the meter upgrade at that time because you're already on site, rather than replacing the line and then coming back at a later date and doing either an upgrade on the meter or a total meter replacement, whatever the package would be. So that was what my concerns were about that, because that's a sizable amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we're, you know, we could find some other uses for that if we wanted to scale that back. So I'm a little new at this, so I'm asking all these questions. I didn't know whether this was the appropriate time or not, but I did want to ask that while you were here so I could have an idea of where we're headed to, what we might be headed to.
Well, like Mike said, we're going to sit down and go through and do a detailed cost benefit before we ever spend a penny.
Okay.
And really look at where this is going to get us.
Okay. Terry, I appreciate the information. I didn't want to put you on the spot.
That's all right.
And if I did, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I had a question about that. When we talked, went through the budget, we discussed the $500,000, the $100,000, and it was mentioned of reversing, or at least putting more money into line replacement and less initially into the metering. We didn't see a line breakdown because if you're planning to spend the $600,000 in the fund, we're not going to see it with what we got. But is that taken into account, or is it still just $100,000 line replacement and $500,000 for the first year of meter automated?
What we had discussed back on the 17th was moving 300 up into the water lines and reducing the initial first year of the water meters from 500 down to 300. That was discussed on the 17th.
It was talked about, but when we wrapped up, remember, we just did those three things that you saw. So that's why it didn't show up on the sheet. I even forgot about it. So if you want to make that adjustment, sure.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering with the sheet here. We just talked primarily about the overall tax amount, but this was kind of an internal shifting of funds.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to change any total dollars. It would just change the-
I've already identified over $300,000 worth of line work for next year, so it's-
Yeah, and that brings it all up to date, right?
Yeah.
It brings everything up to date.
Yeah.
And a couple of blocks.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what going into the system, it seems, that initial automated, there's some planning and scheduling that would maybe justify a little less money in getting some water lines kind of get ahead of those after, you know, last winter, that cold snap, it was just severe on your workers and puts us at risk with our employees working in that extreme cold. So if we can get some of our worst lines replaced, it'd be really advantageous to us. Okay? That's all I had.
I have just a couple more questions.
Okay.
Are the meters, are so many pulled a year and tested for accuracy, your water meters? Are they staggered like you do so many industrials, so many commercial? Or are they just only on a complaint? If someone complains, you'll change meter out and bring it in?
On complaints. If somebody complains that their meter's not accurate, then we pull it and test it.
Okay. As far as once a meter's set, like an industrial or a commercial customer, once it's set, unless they don't have any concerns about it, then is there any way we have of knowing if that meter is still accurate, is still measuring water accurately?
Not without pulling it and testing it. We don't know.
Okay.
And that's, that's an issue when you get into meters that are getting six, seven years old or have a high usage on them.
Okay. So with an automated system, it would be able to troubleshoot itself, do a diagnostic check on itself?
They can, yes.
And then you would have means of setting those meters on some type of a testing schedule? Well, that would improve the accuracy because they would be guaranteed to be-
What I would like to do is go to the ultrasonic type meter where there's no moving parts in the meter.
Okay.
And then those have a battery pack in them that's guaranteed for 20 years.
Okay.
So they don't really know what the life expectancy of those meters will be. They know it's going to be at least 20 years on the battery. You may be able to change that out at 20 years and then get another 20 years out of them. Where your mechanical meters, you need to change them out six, seven years.
Louis, the only other way, of course, is without actually testing the meters, if look at history, if, you know, certain business does a consumption and then all of a sudden it drops or something, or some raises a red flag, it'll be flagged. That's the only other, without actually testing.
Okay.
If you're going to have to pull the meter to test it, you might as well replace it.
In some situations, yes. When you get into larger meters, it's very difficult to, we don't have any way to test anything larger than one inch. So if we have to pull a four-inch meter out, we have to send it in anyway, so.
One of the metering companies, I asked them about battery replacement, and they said you just replace the meter, but there's not a cover plate that you take a battery out and slip a new one in. It's just meter replacement, so. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
I would like to point out one thing before Terry gets away. So at the last meeting, I complained I got stuck behind a tow truck towing one of our sanitation trucks, which I figured was set up for my benefit. And then a couple days ago, a water line burst right in the middle of my yard, which I know you somehow set that up.
I did.
Yeah. I'd like to know how you did it, but thank you a lot.
Which side of the meter was the water line on?
The good side.
We might be thanking you.
Yeah.
I had a question. We're transferring $100,000 out of the sanitation department. We've got a new truck in the budget at $40,000, but in 2016, we bought a truck for $119,000, almost $120,000. So why wouldn't we just buy a new truck with cash on hand out of the fund instead of transfer the money out and then buy a truck on lease purchase?
Mike, did we, there you go. Did we purchase one cash in 2016?
No.
Okay.
We've never purchased one.
No, but we had $119,000 for a new truck and the figures for 2016. So I assumed that was the full price.
That was the price of the truck.
Of the truck.
And the backhoe was coupled with that from the cemetery on a lease purchase.
Okay. How much would a new garbage truck cost?
Well, that truck was used.
Okay. How much would a new garbage truck cost?
They're running about $180,000, $190,000.
Yeah, we have them programmed in the out year at 175, and that's out in 2022.
Okay. So as we did our budget, are we allowing each year for a reserve to build up to buy a new truck for the next truck purchase, or are we?
Right, and on this particular truck, we're not going to do anything until we do an evaluation and analysis on any potential with the Polycarts. So we want to understand that first before we make that investment.
Or contract.
Or contract, yeah, absolutely. So that purchase may not get made.
So it might not be made, then?
That's possible.
Yeah. So it'll come back to the commission before the truck is purchased, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. I know you, we talked about the Memorial Hall Tax Fund, and then it showed a total disbursement of the money in that fund, but it didn't list the capital improvement in there. And I know you mentioned it when we were talking about it, but I forgot to write it down.
Part of that goes back to Building D for the electrical, the additional electrical cost there to support that.
Was, you remember what that amount was?
What was that?
It, well, there was one in '18 and then there was one in '19.
Was one $225,000?
No.
That one?
No, not that.
Not that one? That one was?
For, again, I missed what it was for.
Yeah, when we went through the budget, it was mentioned, and it shows that the full amount, the $362,000 in the Memorial Hall Tax Fund was being transferred, but it didn't have the capital improvement or the direction where that money was going. I thought we discussed it.
One was $197,000 and one was $165,000, if I remember right off the top of my head.
I thought I wrote it down, but I was looking at my notes.
Yeah, that's what it was for.
Memorial Hall Tax Credit, yeah, $362,000. Revised, 2018 revised. Is that what, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, what it was being spent for.
Enter fund, transfer out. Yeah, you're right. Mike has to answer that question.
Yeah, it's for the electric cost in Building D.
That, all that upgrade stuff?
Not construction, but electric bills.
Right.
No, just all that electric, ready, all that stuff.
Okay.
Detailing here, but I guess we'll-
Those were questions that I had. Do you have any? Okay. Any other questions?
No, I don't have any, Mayor.
The next item is consider discussing the City Hall project after the presentation last Vance mentioned a proposal for structural engineering to look at the steel lentil. Have we received anything from him concerning?
Is that that M?
No, the MEP, we got it.
That's the last thing I received.
Okay.
So I haven't received that.
Okay. He had mentioned the need for a structural engineer that wasn't included in his proposal to look at the lentils, so I didn't know if that had come up. And then we got the MEP report today, which was pretty much what was expected. The whole system needs to be replaced. Looking at the projected cost, we had held back $800,000 in the building improvement fund for some of the repairs. Have you looked at funding for some of the others, like from the ADA, since we'll be doing ADA improvements or?
We asked Vance for a breakdown. Want part of that selective demolition would be ADA eligible. We have not heard back from him yet at this point in time. So I did do a forecasting of our cash flow in that fund, and specifically was looking at everything that we have allocated for 2018 and 2019 through the CIPs for the building facility piece of that. And I had then added back in the additional $410,000 based on the proposal. We will have enough money in between '18 and '19 to cover that full cost.
Okay, good, good. It's one thing that you might ask him too, is if he's going to proportionate his fee.
Sticking that also, yeah. That's a good idea.
Right. To distribute it, that some of that would be, and also looking at some of the mechanical demolition too, besides architectural.
Okay. Yeah, we want to give as much as we can over the ADA. It's just got to qualify for that, so.
Right.
That way, it's not putting quite so much of a pinch on the building and facility.
Right. And we are addressing both issues since the building was prior to 1992. We can, or we are mandated to address ADA issues. So we're waiting, basically, he needs to get more information to us, and you've been in contact with him about just kind of waiting.
Right, yeah, I asked him, oh, right after last week, I sent him an email saying, can you break this down for us, Vance, a little bit, a little better than just get an idea how much we can budget in each quarter cent?
Good.
So we'll get that to you as soon as we get it.
Okay. Maybe just in your report, next commission meeting, maybe kind of update that and-
I'll send him another email, remind him. He may have forgotten.
Commissioners, anything on that item?
No, I don't have anything additional.
Okay. Next item, C, consider discussing possible property sale to USD 446. The school district was looking for property to construct bus facility, and they were looking along Peter Pan Road. I think the amount of land was four to five acres. And with our industrial park there, with economic development, you know, it does open us up to another grant from KDOT possibly for extending improvements on Peter Pan Road. The thing that I would see in looking at the property is only have one entrance coming into the industrial park, four park entrance, and then if there's property for this, that they would utilize the same entrance, not an additional entrance on Peter Pan Road. I know we've been trying to market it as a complete package, but just seeing commission interest to visit more with the school board on possible location within the parcel. Does the west, or excuse me, the east side, the land continues on the south boundary clear over to the railroads tracks, doesn't it?
No, that piece is, there's a piece is probably owned by-
Where does our property, along the east border of that parcel? Where is-
This parcel is owned by someone else.
Over at-
So it ends, this ends here. And then this is the IEP piece that was just bought.
Right. Okay, the south-
And then you mean up here.
No, the parcel that we just had the lease purchase contract on, the south-
Are you talking about where it probably ends?
No. Go to the green, the big green, down south, the south property line?
Down here, yeah, that's-
As you go east from the east line, is that, is that the-
Yeah, that's way south.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that our property also? How far north, where's the north boundary straight up from?
Um, it's got this label on it, but-
Is it across under that label?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So-
Yeah, because the rest of it's pretty chopped up. This is the only big, really big piece that we have there. And actually, even if we ever got this, I noticed today that there, there was some flooding over in this area. So, part of that might be in the flood zone, we need to check that out. But that's currently not owned by the city. And then, uh, when you get up into here, that's the Dittmore property. The city does own this right-of-way here for a road. Jeff is speaking more about that, but that means like they want to put that road in that right-of-way, so they purchased that, we're opening that up to Oak Street.
So, what?
They can make a couple.
Sure.
Comments, as you know, we've been talking with the school district, suggesting other alternatives, you know, they came to us and talked about that. And as you mentioned, what we would recommend would, would be able to keep that parcel big. And we, as you said, we've been marketing, and I think we have two proposals out, and Trish can certainly speak to that. And, and if you'd like to give Trish a chance to talk about why we want to keep it large, I'm sure she'd be happy to, to do that. But that's what we've offered other sites, we offered that one site by the FedEx. And they said they're interested in it, but they're, it's problematic in that it crosses a railroad track, although there's like twelve trains a year or something like that.
There's very little traffic to Matt Corr off that, that school line.
But they're, they're still, they're still looking at it.
Probably twelve times a year are they using that industrial lead there.
Yeah, so I haven't talked further with, with Rusty since early this week. But they're still looking at it, he said, it's not a problem. And, and I know he's also looking at some other land owned by some private owners as well. So, in our view, it's kind of like a last resort to put it in our industrial park. But, but again, that's, well, the commission, but I don't know if you want to, if that's okay, Mayor?
Sure. Even though she didn't fill out a form to address the commission?
I didn't fill out a form, I can do that afterwards.
There's a fine for that, but.
All right, send me the bill. I, I wanted to let you know, so I've been doing some research on this as well. We do have two active request proposals through Kansas Department of Commerce for this site right now. I checked with Commerce and they said those are both still live, and the company's still considering our site. So, there's that. The other piece is that, I, I also spoke with KDOT regarding their economic development program for transportation, if that should be developed. And for a bus barn, it would not be eligible for any KDOT economic development funding to extend Peter Pan Road any farther north. In fact, unfortunately, they, they send the money out for economic development projects based on who has had projects in the past. And since we did get an excellent grant from KDOT Economic Development Program for our hospital, that puts us at the very bottom of the list to get ED funding again for a project in, in Independence. Unless we had a very large economic impact project that would take up that entire portion, considerable jobs probably aren't going to be eligible for any KDOT funding to improve that road, since it's not a KDOT, it's not highway. If it was a highway, that'd be a different story, but since it's not, it wouldn't be eligible. And then also, we are marketing that entire parcel there west of, I think it's Hackney Boulevard, as a rail-served site. So, even if they went for the property next to FedEx, if we ever do get someone on that site that needs rail, that would be problematic for the bus barn getting in and out. Now, if you adjusted and had an access point north to Oak Street, then maybe that alleviates that issue. But until that would be constructed, that probably wouldn't be a good option in case we ever did get a high rail user at that site. It's the only site really in Independence left that's a rail-served site. And those sites are very far and few between in the state of Kansas. So, it actually makes this site pretty competitive if you're looking for a company that might need that, that service. So, so looking at that, it would be challenging if, if we broke that up any farther and took any pieces out. It's fifty-five acres, and that's if you go into the nooks and crannies of that parcel. And the current RFPs I have, they wanted sixty-five acres, and I have another one that wanted seventy acres. I asked Kansas Department of Commerce if we should submit anyhow, and they said, yes, they would consider a few less acres if, if the site was an open site, which it was. So, it's just challenging if you start making these sites any smaller than that. I, you just don't see them less than fifty acres anymore.
I'm just looking at how long the property's been available, we trying to get a business, and we're trying to get one that's going to take that whole land. Are we missing the opportunity to have three or four businesses in there while we're waiting for one big to take it all?
Well, and that's why you already have the part, the area to the east, which is exactly parceled for your smaller businesses. So, this industrial park's really laid out nicely for a long-term economic development plan. You have several parcels that can hold a thirty, forty thousand square foot facility out by the FedEx building. But then you also have the larger parcel with fifty-five acres that could put a three or four hundred thousand square foot building if you should get it. You want to have options in case you do have that. And we're definitely stepping up our efforts for recruitment anyway. But it, it, it takes a long time, but that's why we have to have these long-term plans.
What place? What's the timeframe on knowing something about the two RFPs that are looking at it?
I, I don't know. Sometimes they take two months, sometimes they take five months. If, this is in the business's decision, it's in their court.
It seems like that, we've heard that they've been looking at it for quite a while.
Yeah.
More than two months and more than five months.
Yeah. We, we regularly have one. We had project, it was called Project Bear, that we submitted back in December, and we got word on that one back in March that the site didn't work for them. And then we had another RFP that came through in March, and then another one that came through at the first part of May. So, those are the two that are currently active. But we get those, we fall off, and usually we don't even get notified that we fell off for five or six months, unfortunately. And we, every single month, I send the email to all of the KDOT, KDOT, or Kansas Department of Commerce staff to ask what the status is. And usually, they're still looking, they're still considering, no, no elimination has happened yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, what's your thoughts?
I want to be a great partner to our school district, of course. But if they've got other options, you know, from private sellers, I would rather they, I'd rather they stick with that, keep our industrial park as intact as we can.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with, when she pointed out about the, the rail line, and we have multiple sites that will accommodate multiple sizes of commercial buildings. So, we can accommodate a bigger facility or a smaller, I'd say keep the options open. And if there's other land available in the city, that, that maybe that's where USD ought to, ought to look toward.
Okay. I think that's decision of the commission then.
You, you would agree with that?
I'll agree with the decision of the commission. So, you know, I, I think that's the advantage of us being on the commission, is each of us can freely express our ideas, and we go with the decision of the commission. So, we have no problem with that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, our reports, city board minutes. Any questions about the IHPRC minutes? Next would be the audit update.
Pass those down. This is a copy of, of the changes. If you look in there, I highlighted the changes from the last time in a blue, blue ink, so you can quickly see what changed. Doesn't look like a lot, but there's actually been some significant changes there. If you have any questions, Mike can be, be happy to answer them.
Yeah, looking at, at our audit, or not our audit, but our, our budget, the auditors usually give us an idea of unencumbered cash that we use to develop our.
So, I use the same reports that I give them to determine that.
Okay. So, instead of us getting the information from the auditor, you're just using your information?
Yeah.
Okay. Has, you know, with, all the documents been updated since the two thousand sixteen audit was completed, all the treasurer's reports?
We're, we're still working on the treasurer's reports, all the reconciliations going back to twenty-seventeen, all of them. And year-to-date for twenty-eighteen, they're all completed. So, now taking that information and updating the treasurer's reports. So, that's, that's next on, on the process.
So, how far are we out on our treasurer's reports for two thousand eighteen?
I would say at this point in time, I mean, getting them updated is not going to be that big, big of a problem. Treasurer's reports don't take a long time, it's the reconciliations that, that take some time. So, we'll, we'll be getting those done very quickly.
Just for information, the status report like the others will be on the website if anybody's interested.
Okay.
When you say very quickly, define quickly.
Couple weeks, tops.
Couple weeks tops, yeah.
So, so far, it's all been in-house preparing for the auditors, and that'll continue till the end of September, then they're going to come in and start their work then?
Yes, yes.
And, and as far as them coming in at the end of September, do we, I know the subject to change, but we get some idea of where the audit is headed to. Six weeks from them coming in, six weeks to two months, we get a pretty good indication of where the audit's going to fall, or, or will they be giving us an indication as to what the audit is starting to look like?
We got a, an auditor here, we could probably answer that question better than I could, but.
Hey, oh, have you met this guy?
Yeah, I have.
Want to introduce you to David, the swinker that joined us Monday, City Clerk Treasurer's role.
Okay.
Anyway, I mean, they're onsite for three days, and then they go back and, it depends, I think.
Yeah, it kind of depends on if they have any other questions for us, how many other jobs they have going on after that. Because, you know, they're out in the field, they're not back in the office right then to report, and so we're just going to have to ask them what they think, how long their timeframe is, after they've completed their onsite.
And I should have said former auditor.
Yeah, former auditor. So, it could be?
It could be a month, it could be.
Two months, somewhere in that timeframe. I'd have some indication as to where, where this is headed.
Yeah, he, he had kind of indicated that he was figuring on about a month, but just don't know what, what he's going to find. He hasn't done the audit before for the city, so particularly after the last one, we want to make sure it's right, and we want to have good communication with him. So, but I, I would think, hopefully after he gets in there and he's been working on it for a week or two, we'll probably have, be having some conversations with him.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions?
I know.
City managers' comments?
I don't have any comments, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner comments?
None for me.
Most?
None for me.
Last time, you know, I mentioned partnering and, and cosponsoring, have you started any research or talking to Jeff about defining that?
I'm sorry, I was talking to Jeff there, cosponsoring.
Last time, I brought up the term that we use a lot with different organizations, and it's even in one of our events that we approved in the consent agenda, that we're partnering.
Oh, right.
Or we're cosponsoring something. We don't have anything defined, and yet it appears that without a definition or some guidelines, that we open ourselves that should we to choose not to cosponsor or partner with a group without a reason other than we just don't want to, or we might be open ourselves for some, some trouble, some litigation. And just maybe we need to look at a definition or a policy, or just never partner or cosponsor anything with anyone.
I also not following that very well. I, I don't know how you open your, cosponsoring in the past has been just like making a venue available for a reduced or no charge, because it's another organization of similar status. I, I mean, I don't need, like First Friday, I don't know if they pay a fee, they use it for free, I guess you could say you cosponsor there. I don't, and if you stop doing that, I don't know how you could be liable. It's a, it's a voluntary donation and.
That's a fair question. If, if we agreed tonight to partner with the chamber, then somebody else comes along and asks us to partner with them, and we say no, does that open us up to, oh, you partner with the chamber, why not us?
It opens you to criticism, but I don't think it opens you to liability. You're always going to get criticized for something, you know that.
We know that, yeah, baby. Welcome, Dave.
You know, and that's, it's hard to be fair to everybody. You make a decision, fifty percent of the people will say yay, and fifty percent may say boo, so.
But without a written direction or policy, you encourage the conflict. And, you know, it seems like we, if we're going to decide or continue to partner or cosponsor, then we should have some guidelines and some expectation about what our limit is and, and what we're willing to represent.
I think the difficulty is in the type of events that you're asked to co-sponsor. I, I know Memorial Hall, they have a tiered approach to who's wanting to use space. If you meet a certain category, you maybe get it free. If you're a private for-profit company, you're probably going to pay. Now, I mean, if you gave me an example, I, you know, I don't think you could put a definition out there that would cover everything you're asked to do, it'd be, it'd be difficult. That's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
Yeah.
Mike, I could suggest that we check around other cities that have venues like this and see if they have any, you don't need to reinvent the wheel, if they have any kind of policy, if they cosponsor, if they, I mean, that's, that's what I would suggest is.
Somebody else has a written policy on how they manage that question.
Because I, I share Jeff's concern is trying to define that, and there's so many variables that might.
But there's always a starting point, you have to be the first. And sometimes, even though it's not complete, at least it's an attempt. Because there was a, a question came up with a, a group that wanted, that was conducting a march and some problems with riding the train or some confusion there. Sometimes, you know, we, it's better to make an attempt and have to modify it than just continue running blind until somebody finds the, the right people to stand up and say, no, you're not going to do that to me. But I think those first places, you know, whether they've got a venue or not, because we're asked to cosponsor events in the park, does that mean we're going to provide police and fire and EMS, or does that mean we're going to provide snacks? Or what's the limit, you know, so? But I, I appreciate you checking with other communities, and that'd be a good place to start.
I, I will say, I think in some areas where it has been an issue in the past, that the city over the years has adopted policies, like Owe, for instance, they have a policy there, this building here, they, they've got some guidelines. I mean, you could always add guidelines to other areas too, it's kind of hard to put your hands on it.
Well, that's kind of what we did with the alcoholic, the beer consumption and beer gardens. And we looked at, at developing something that would give us some guidance and yet some restrictions too. So, it just, things seem to change, so, okay. That was all that I, I had. Next item on the agenda is executive session.
Public concerns.
Public concerns.
And I wrote that here, and you even filled out a list, Debbie.
Yeah.
I was ignoring you.
Give me my treatment or something.
Yeah. Yes, public concerns, Debbie. Yes, public concerns, Debbie. Concerns 2019 spending.
Well, I'd like to say, it's nice to see my old buddy, the three-minute clock. Now, let's see if I'm going to be able to beat it here from lack of experience. Okay, you ready? We taxpayers have been forced to waste over 10 million of our hard-earned dollars due to the irresponsible actions and wasteful spending of the city and inadequate oversight by elected officials. Since the avenues by which the city can raise revenues have either been exhausted or legally limited, trying to pay for that negligence while still trying to meet the city's needs has tremendous, has been tremendously difficult for many residents. With the arrival of our new city managers with years of experience in finance, many of us assumed he would prudently manage the city's scarce funds through the current financial crisis and would end the status quo of wasteful spending at City Hall, which has been financially disastrous for us taxpayers. Unfortunately, the wasteful status quo spending is still alive and well at City Hall, as most recently evidenced at, by the 2019 budget discussions and proposed spending, which included the following wasteful status quos. The status quo of wasting large sums of our money on items that would likely be used by a small segment of the population, such as $50,000 for AV equipment to live-stream commission meetings. The status quo of wasting large sums of money on items which may not be needed in the near future, such as a new sanitation truck and polycarts should the city contract out its trash services. The status quo of having to waste large sums of our money to buy a new animal control truck to replace the current three-year truck, which was ill-suited for its intended use. The status quo of not aggressively exploring options which may result in significant savings for us taxpayers, such as contracting out trash and ambulance services and finding another health insurance provider. Fortunately, we now have you commissioners whom understand the absolute necessity of controlling spending so we taxpayers can recover from crushing tax and rate increases and enormous debt piled on our backs by the years of irresponsible governments. I would ask you that you charge Mr. Whitehead today with vigorously exploring the options referenced earlier that may result in significant savings so when the 2020 budget season arrives, more money may be available to address some of our city's urgent needs, such as its decaying streets. I would also ask that you never forget that although the status quo has served city staff well, it has been, it has been financially catastrophic for those of us paying the bills. Therefore, your fight against that status quo must continue despite any resistance, as it will work towards a more effective, more affordable, and more responsible city government. Should you fail to do so, there's little doubt that the foot-dragging and wasteful status quo spending at City Hall will continue, much to the detriment of nearly 9,000 people that call Independence, Kansas, home. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you, Debbie.
Wow.
Okay, now, executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of an employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 754319 BA. And we'll resume at 6:45. And like to have the commissioners at this time.
All second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're back in session now. There was no action taken from executive session. Next item is adjournment, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.